At this time, I would like to ask Robert Campbell to come forward and lead us in our prayer tonight.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love and your mercy and your goodness. We thank you for your protection and keeping your hand on each and every one of us. We ask now that you bless the city council, Lord, give them wisdom, give them understanding and compassion as they try to lead this city. We ask this in all your great name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I'd like to introduce Life Scout Jonathan Van Newkirk. He's from Boy Scout Troop 770. He is working on his citizenship in the community.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll, please. Brooks, here. Harmon, here. Lilly, here. McMahon, aye. Hi, here. Keplinger, here. Sanders, here. Williams, here. Approve of minutes of the regular meeting on September 25th, 2017, and the special call meeting on October 26th, 2017, as transcribed. Move for adoption of those minutes as transcribed. Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye. You have received a copy of the September 2017 financials. Is there any questions or concerns, any discussion there? Bearing none, next item is 2016 Legislative Audit Report. I believe each one of you received a copy of those. I have my usual question I have every year about the district court clerk. It's like every, I don't know for how many years, it's been several years in the past, we've had the same comments on the findings that there's some money that's been misidentified in the court clerks. Is there answers? I don't know.
The amount goes down every year, however, doesn't it?
It does go down, you're correct.
It had to do with a computer, when they change computer systems, computer software systems. The judge is here, I think, right there. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. At this time, I would like representatives of Sherwood Police Department to come forward. They have a presentation they would like to make.
This time, we're calling forward Officer Billy Stare. Officer Stare is a patrolman currently assigned to the Midnight Patrol Ship with the Sherwood Police Department. He started his career in Jacksonville Police Department in 2010 and worked there until transferring to the Sherwood PD in March 2017. Officer Stare is a legacy in the fact that his father is also a Jacksonville police officer. A life-saving citation he is about to receive is the first award Officer Stare has received in his career thus far. For outstanding performance as a member of the Sherwood Police Department on July 7th, 2017. On that date, Officer Stare responded to Haley Drive in reference to a motorcycle accident with serious injury. Upon arrival, he quickly assessed the medical condition of the injured driver and noticed that he was suffering from severe arterial bleeding in two different areas. He immediately began life-saving aid and applied two cat tourniquets before men could arrive on the scene. One of the medical personnel arrived stated that the efforts most likely saved the life of the injured driver. Your training and willingness to help are characteristic of a professional police officer. It is because of officers like you, the residents of Sherwood proudly support the Sherwood Police Department and its officers. This distinct accomplishment reflects credit upon yourself and the Sherwood Police Department. Signed, Chief Edwell.
A job well done. I like the way you said his first. Are those the new tourniquets that we just made all the officers carry lately? Those are the new tourniquets that we have? Good expense. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Mayor and council, I'd like to ask if we could take up the question or rather the discussion of the hot check litigation rather than waiting till item 14. Go ahead and let our representatives from the league come forward, if that's all right with the council.
So moved. Second. Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye.
Mike, you want to come on up to the podium, Mark?
Mayor, may I address the council?
Please.
I'm Mike Mosley. I'm your attorney from the Arkansas Municipal League. This is the Director of Legal Services, Mark Hayes, with me, my boss, one of two of my bosses. Scott Mosley just dropped his league. I've been defending both the city and Judge Hale in a litigation filed by four individuals proposed to be class action for the last year, little over a year. The ACLU is an entity known as Lawyers Committee on Civil Rights out of Washington DC. And some private lawyers they hired from New York have been on the other side of this case for the last year. It's been a lot of work in defending the city and the court. In the summer, early summer, we had filed a motion to dismiss the litigation along with Larry Jegley's attorney from the AG's office in County. And Judge Moody granted that motion to dismiss us from the litigation. Within 30 days of that, they filed what's known as a motion to alter judgment, which is a motion to reconsider, basically. Making some additional arguments that the plaintiffs had yet to make. In late July, I responded to that motion, as well as the other defendants. In early August, they responded to the motion. And that motion is pending. Right now, a motion to reconsider. Throughout this litigation, various attempts to make suggestions to work this case out have been brought to me. And the bottom line is, until now, until recently, nothing like this in writing has been proposed. Although it's been, I've been told since November that something like this was coming. There's always a catch. There is no catch in this. And so I'm here before you, and you've all been distributed a proposed stipulated settlement agreement. And my advice is that we accept it, but I need the council's authority. Let me tell you generally speaking what this does, okay? All this does, first of all, is there is no exchange of a dime, any of the city's money. None. Secondarily, it maintains the status quo as to practices in the district court with respect to hot check cases and other cases when a person claims that they are unable to pay a fine. There are alternatives that are noted herein. These are practices that precede disagreement. These are practices that are at least a year old in many respects, and many of these are years old practices. And so all it does is simply maintain the status quo. The city is a party to the litigation. The city would be a party to this agreement. But in large measure, this agreement doesn't pertain to much of anything a city employee or city official does or does not do. This really relates to the practices of the judge in the courtroom. The only involvement of the city would be that if a city employee or city official has any involvement or control over any of those practices, that they simply cooperate and follow directives of the district judge, which is an existing manner of doing business. There are some technical changes that were made on Saturday on a phone conference between me and the plaintiff's attorney, between the document that you have and the document that I have, that are really just immaterial. There are technical changes, they relate, they're ministerial. Some grammar, some spelling, and then just some nitpicky items that needed to be addressed, but nothing of substance. Again, I submit this is just a status quo. And it would be my recommendation, this will end the litigation for good. The other side, the ACLU attorneys have told me that if we're unwilling to agree to this, that they'll continue the litigation. Well, if they continue the litigation, then so will we. But this is an opportunity to end this litigation. We had a good court and we have a better court, and for no money. And it's my recommendation, respectfully, that we do that. And I would need both to second and avoid on that. That would authorize for honor, the mayor, to sign this agreement along with Judge Hale. Any questions?
Can we hear from Judge Hale? I just wanted to know if he's read it and he agrees, it doesn't change any of the procedures that you're doing now?
That's correct.
So. And none of the procedures, it doesn't change any of the procedures you're doing, you're already doing all these procedures? I've read it, I just skimmed it really, and it says that, basically, it says you're doing everything you're doing, everything in here now you're already doing.
Yes, that's correct.
And you've been doing them for a while?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept.
I'll second it.
Settlement, yeah.
Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye. Thank you.
May I be excused this way?
Yes, you may.
May I be excused now? There's no excuse for you.
You are an excuse, Butch. Committees and/or commissions, Advertising Promotion Commission. We did meet, I don't know if you got your minutes before the packets were, got your packet, but anyway, the minutes are here if you want to have any questions. Seeing none, we do meet again next month, which is the first Wednesday in November at 3:00 PM. And the Trail of Lights will be opening, it will be, so there'll be more on that. Actually, it'll be, the Trail of Lights will be opening the night of our next council meeting, so thank you for bringing that up. Sunny and I were just talking about that today, I would not have been able to do it. So November 27th, the Trail of Lights, bigger and better than ever. Going with our new entrance off of Bear Paul Road. Still accepting donations and canned cash or canned goods. And invite everybody to come out. We'd love to see you guys. We want to have a bigger and better car count than last year. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee.
We did not meet. We plan to, do we have a business for a meeting next month? It falls on holiday, okay, then we probably won't. But 10th is Veterans Day, yeah.
So I think the holiday is observed on Monday, which is the Friday.
What's observed on Friday, isn't it?
Friday. Kansas, Friday 11th is Saturday.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Personnel Committee.
We did not meet, and as of right now, we don't have anything on the schedule, but we do meet, it's November the 2nd at 5:00.
Okay, thank you.
Rick Center.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
May I ask for a motion to waive the reading requirement with the exceptions of items 12 and 13, please?
So moved.
Second.
Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye.
An ordinance amending ordinance 729 regarding scheduled uses, removing mini storage from C3 zoning as prohibited use and for other purposes.
Is there any discussion or questions that you have regarding this proposal?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second. Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye.
An ordinance amending ordinance 729 increasing lot coverage from 33 and 1/3% to 45% for zoning District R1 single-family residents.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye. Senior Citizen Committee. Sewer Committee. Street Committee.
Street Committee did not meet. We do plan to meet the 2nd Thursday in November, about 30:00 PM.
A resolution appointing Steve Bruno replacing Scott Miller to serve on the Sherwood Plan Commission and Board of Adjustment.
Move for adoption. Second. Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye. Mr. Bruno is with us tonight. Raise your hand if you acknowledge. Appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
An ordinance to approve an agreement for Economic Development Services between the City of Sherwood, Arkansas and the Sherwood, Arkansas Chamber of Commerce to waive competitive bidding and for other purposes.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
Second. Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye.
An ordinance granting a petition for vacation of an existing public utility easement and for other purposes.
Sure. There is a, if you can picture the lot, you know where the Chamber of Commerce headquarters is and green real estate and all that. And then right in front of that is a big open area. Before you get to the road, it takes you into Neighborhood Market. And Wayne Smith here, Wayne, if I misspeak, help me here. We have replatted, yes, if you can look at the diagram, they have replatted that and are going to use it for other purposes. And on that, in that diagram, you will see some utility easements that were planned under the original plat that was filed with the city. Now, to develop that by statute, if they're not going to use those utility easements, they have to be vacated. They have to be given up, and the city has to approve the vacation of the utilities.
This is not the first time we've done this.
No, it's just been a while. And we're vacating all the utility easements shown on this drawing, the diagonal, the part of easement across. Is that correct, Wayne? So we're abandoning and modifying.
Wayne, you have that right there. You want to just show everybody what you're.
Yeah, show everybody.
I was going to say, I want to see.
Mr. Wayne, we can't see. Do your back.
Let me hold you.
I'm sorry?
Does this affect any of our. Is that Hale's same way?
No.
Okay, just the utility.
It's his utility easements across his lot.
You don't move for the option.
Second. Harmon.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Lilly, aye. Brooks, aye. Sanders, aye. McMahon, aye. Keplinger, aye. Aye.
An ordinance changing the name of Brookswood Street to Brockington Road. This is the first reading of the ordinance.
I believe we have.
Déjà vu.
We have someone here that would like to, that has signed up to speak, say, very.
Mayor, do you want to read one time? Thank you, Mayor. Do I need permission to speak to the council?
You're fine.
Like the lawyer did.
He gets paid a lot more.
Oh, okay. Thank you for giving me time to speak about this. Seems to be a little bit of a hot button issue from what I understand. And since I own a business on Brookswood, I thought it might be good to hear from somebody on the street that is going to be impacted by this. Although I became a resident of Sherwood in 1994, 95, didn't move my business here until 2004. And I bought property there, and there was already some work being done related to the roads out in front of the business. So I had no input into that. I think the right of way had already been secured. And there was already some long-term planning, I believe, under the prior mayor for the expansion of Brockington. And so about 10 years ago, when this subject came up about the name of the road out in front of my business, I objected to it being changed at that point because the flyover had not been put in place. And I just spent money on letterhead and envelopes and signs and business cards and so on. So I objected to it because it was going to have a financial impact on my business. And as I understand, at that point, there were some other objections to it as well. And I don't know where those voices stand today. But subsequent to the flyover going in and all of the experiences that I've had as a business owner over the years, the confusion that I've actually incurred from my clients that have been looking to find us coming off of Highway 67167, they get confused because the highway sign says Brookswood Street. And so I have to explain to them, although it says Brookswood Street on the highway, when you come down here, if you're looking on your GPS, it's not called Brookswood Street, it's called Brookswood Road. Unless you ask somebody else that's been there longer than me, in which case it's called Brookwood. So there is confusion. And now that there is a lot more commerce and many, many thousands of cars that come out in front of our respective businesses over the years since the flyover was put in place, for the purposes of continuity, I've had a change of heart because I believe that it will help to clarify where people are going, how they access that, both from the beginning point, which is on 67167, and then continuing down Brockington, which I'm a resident off of Brockington Road. So I think that it'll make it easier to communicate that and for people to find us. And as the area grows and expands, because it is a burgeoning area for commerce, I believe, I think it's going to be easier for everybody concerned. There may be some people for nostalgic reasons, may have had some hand in the naming of the road. And I understand that from that historic perspective, and maybe the city council can pay tribute to them by making a gesture of renaming another road that opens up in the city at a later date. But for continuity reasons, I want to encourage the council to move forward on this, even though as a business owner, I know I'm going to incur some expense. I was recently interviewed about my feelings on the matter, and I said if the city council can reimburse us for our costs associated with all of that, then that would be great, and that offer still holds, I'll be glad to accept any money that the city wants to throw our way. But that withstanding. Oh, I thought it was an offer. Oh, I'm sorry.
You invited us to, but we didn't accept.
Oh, okay. But that withstanding, I feel like that it's a good idea, and I think that it's, its time has finally come to maybe move forward and make progress on that matter. Be happy to. Still, any questions?
We appreciate you coming and speaking to us. I think the one concern probably, I haven't had any opposition really from residents. I mean, we tried to do this years ago, and it's been discussed at several levels lately. The only thing is, my concern is it didn't go through the street committee and hasn't been vetted through. Steve, you talked with the highway department, that's the, would you share with that? That's the only kind of concern that.
Sure.
Get started at the bottom up and start with it.
I did speak with the district director prior to, actually, I spoke to lead council and I spoke to the district director, who indicated that if the council passes an ordinance renaming the street, that the highway department will honor that ordinance and will cooperate with the transition. They did say that will require them to make alterations to two existing signs on the freeway. And the gentleman I spoke with wasn't specific on how quickly that would be accomplished because there's a significant amount of planning that goes into that, because they have to close a few lanes of the freeway down for certainly the time while they change the lettering. But essentially, he indicated that Little Rock's changed roads a time or two, changed names a time or two, and so it's something that they're accustomed to. Basically, that was the discussion.
I think their cost would be minimal. I mean, they do signage all the time. Maybe that's the only concern that we have staff-wise, is that it didn't go through. Do you have any concerns about it not going through the street?
No, I don't. I mean, I don't think there would have been any opposition on the street committee anyway. I think it's a good idea myself. I guess, you know, to a broader concern though, you know, how would we make sure that Brockington Road shows up on, you know, Google Maps as Brockington Road, not Brockington Street and all that? I don't know what control we put into that, I mean, but that's a whole different issue.
And when he mentioned Brookwood versus Brookswood, the Bagley actually says Brookswood, which is really my understanding, the determining document. But on Brockington, I also had a call today, someone said, well, if you're going to consider change in Brookswood, which they were not opposed to that, they said, why don't we correct the spelling of Brockington? Brockington, for the name's sake, did not have a G in it. And there's a G on Brockington, and the Bagley map has a G in Brockington, and I went back there and checked today. But that was a concern that a resident made, that if you're going to change Brookwood, which is fine, take the G out of Brockington and have it correctly spelled for those whom it was named for. And I told that person I would spell it after.
The only thing I had a question about, and it's just someone that mentioned to me, if you're thinking about the whole stretch, what happens when you cross 107 and it becomes Oakdale?
I think that's a whole different issue.
I mean, I don't.
On another issue, I did speak to MEMs, and they actually laughed at me on the phone when I said, do you feel like 30 days would be enough notice in terms of changing up your computer system on your maps and so forth? And she laughed, and she's like, we don't need 30 days, this is a quick change, and I guess with computerized age and so forth. I did go and speak with the fire chief, Fire Chief Flynn specifically. He said, we have to learn new street names all the time, it's just a matter of updating. And then I understand that our police dispatch is very good at updating, they get new streets all the time, and the 911 system runs through them. So I think with the fact that we are taking this one month at a time, I've told Kevin that at the next street committee meeting, if they would like to review this and come up with a recommendation, yea or nay, in terms of, you know, if they feel that that would be appropriate, that would be great. So the soonest, right now, it would be set to be voted on officially would be December, and it would take effect in January. I talked to the postal service, they said that they honor forwarding mail for a minimum of a year. Typically, they work with businesses and do it quite extensively past that. They've had the same postal route. In terms of duplicate addresses, that can easily be addressed by you backing up into two digits. up into two digits, um, or one digit on the beginning of that road, and so it makes sense to everybody going all the way through. So, um, I have had an outpouring of people in the Brockington Road especially area, um, as well as Lee Avenue, um, some from the Woods Edition and so forth, people who traditionally take it, because it is very confusing if you are new to the area of which, that's the bulk of what we are now, um, trying to explain initially how to navigate all that, so.
That's from the council.
Well, are, are you, would you like to amend that to the correct, correct spelling?
Well, I think, why don't you all discuss that at street committee next month and come up with a.
This council usurps the street committee, so, I mean, you know, right now, we're talking about renaming of, of Brookswood to, to Brockington, so, um.
But if we're going to rename Brockington, it needs to be.
I think renaming Brockington and renaming Oakdale, I think those are completely different issues than, than renaming Brookswood.
He was talking about the, the G is what he was referring to. I'm sorry.
So I get that, but that's, you know, that, that's changing the spelling of that road, and, and in, in a sense, changes the name of that road. It becomes Brockington instead of Brockington. Um, I don't know how confusing that would be. I mean, I, I would get it, you know, hey, I understand, but, but to me, that's a completely separate issue. I think there, there's more, um, you know, more street-facing, uh, businesses, you know, potential, uh, implications for changing that, and, and even Oakdale at this point, but I certainly have, uh, no issues with changing.
Can, can I throw out too, that, in, since, since that question was not on the agenda, I think it would be inappropriate at this juncture to take that up. Where, what, what was on the agenda and what would have to the public for notice is changing the name of Brookswood, not changing the spelling of Brockington. And so I, I don't think we ought to take that up.
Oh, I agree, but I would just ask.
Well, I, I, I agree with you. I mean, the thing of it is, the, the expense, with the expense of changing the signs, if you're going to do it, let's just do it one time.
You know.
Make that decision. But we, we could talk about that in.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, I, I think it's understandable, I think now, the way Steve explained it, he did a good job, good job explaining it, that we don't have the opposition now that we had 10 years ago to the change of the name from Brookswood to Brockington. However, if you want to change Brockington to Brockington, and I think that you're going to find a different result, you may find a different result with all the businesses that face Brockington. Now, I say that, uh, but I understand and am sympathetic to the idea of changing the name, because I've known the Brockington family all my life, and, you know, I, I think that it would be great to have that street spelled, spelled properly, and, uh, think it should be spelled properly, but it's been that way so long, and we've allowed so many businesses to develop there, that's probably something that we should have taken up before now. But, you know, like you say, we can, we can talk about it, but I think that, uh, I think that it's nice that we have, you know, no opposition so far to the Brookswood change, but it might have a different result. Okay, just one reading? All right, very good. An ordinance establishing business license provisions for medical marijuana businesses operating in the City of Sherwood, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. That is the first reading of that ordinance.
Can you give us some history on this? Can you let our city attorney?
Um, with, with the advent of medical marijuana becoming legalized, um, cities around the state are taking different, uh, taking different action on, on how they want to address, uh, the potential of those businesses being within their community. There have been two trends, if you will. One of the trends was a moratorium, uh, which some cities passed back in, right after the, um, the election, that expired in the summer or are expiring now, which basically we're just saying, we, we will not issue a permit to anybody in this type of business until we have some certain regulations in place. The other trend has been for cities to go ahead and just establish the business licensing procedure and the fees that will be charged, and that's what we, you have before you now as a consideration of, of how that should happen. In terms of zoning, uh, this is state law, state statute that these are approved, and if they meet the approval of the, uh, of the ABC and of the commission that they have established, then they can make application to come into a community, and, um, they fall under the pharmacy, um, guideline. If, if, if they ask to locate in, in, in an area, which I guess would be C-3 most of the time, uh, then you have to treat them like a pharmacy. You can't bar them from coming in the city. If they get approved to, uh, for the zone, if you will, there's going to be six zones, I believe, in the state of Arkansas for dispensaries and for, um, cultivation, was what I was trying to say. Anyway, that, we just want to get the conversation started, that was the purpose of drafting.
We've already had some calls.
Yeah, the mayor and I and, and Paul, we talked about it and thought this might be the best way to get the conversation started. We, we've had some calls regarding, um, license applications. Is that the reason for the emergency clause on it?
I don't think it really needs an emergency clause on it. It, it just kind of went on there, I think.
It, it is.
But you just didn't want to wait till we were faced with it to give us some thought?
Well.
Would only take action.
There, I will say that there, um, Paul, do you remember how many applications they told you they had? Right, and it, I, I could stand corrected, but the last time I spoke to the ABC, there was not a place that, that you could go yet to see the applicants and see where the applicants wanted to locate their businesses. I don't think we have that information yet. Is that correct? Best of your knowledge? Okay.
Like there's eight zones and four per zone, I believe, is what.
Wasn't, wasn't the other alternative for a local election, local option in the election to, um, not have them in the city?
You can't do that.
I thought there was.
They, they're treated just like a pharmacy. You'd be barring pharmacy, but, but the way Steve done it, it was very well, very well thought out, very well written, uh, and did a great job on it.
Well, thank you for that, but I can't take full credit because I've, I'm in, in discussions with the Texas Arcanus of the attorney, and this is something kind of similar to what they're doing, so I, I appreciate your kind words, but I don't want to make it, make out as if I drafted this out of scratch.
Research.
So, we're not saying there's no definitive that there's any going into Sherwood or anything like that. This is just a proactive.
They have a location in mind, individual that called us, but, uh, that, that doesn't mean that they'll be approved, but, you know, it, it could very well come up though, because, um, I was told that we were a very, uh, good candidate, given our location in, in this, in the, in the zone. So we just need to have the discussion and, and give it some thought, and, um, it's very likely that it, that it will emerge.
I appreciate that we're do, thinking a forethought instead reactionary to someone applying for the city. I appreciate that from both of you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Well, we just want to read it one time.
All right, Mayor, that is the agenda.
Right, very good. The, can you tell us when the budget team is going to start meeting? Yes, yes. Dates that you can meet?
Yeah, or if you'll.
Just send them to Stacy. Just, just send them to Stacy. Um, we just got the compilation, and I'll sit down with the department heads and we'll kind of, it's looking pretty good already. Okay, is, is there any old business? We moved it up already. New business? Um, I'm, I saw city attorney, would you like to share the, the decision last week, the ruling with the water situation? I'm not sure if everyone's heard that.
Mayor, um, um, yes, um, Judge Wendell Griffin heard oral arguments from the Natural Resources Commission, from the City of Jacksonville, and, um, also the attorney that's helping us in, in, in this litigation, and he, Judge Griffin affirmed the Natural Resources Commission decision, which was favorable to the City of Sherwood. So we are now waiting to determine if Jacksonville intends to appeal that, or if we're going to negotiate something and try to get this worked out. Also, I will add that the mayor and I, we were invited to the legislature and, and a committee on water.
Task force.
Yeah, the Water Task Force, and, and, uh, they listened very intently and, and, uh, were taken aback by the position of, of the city of Jacksonville that put us in this posture in the first place, so.
I think it's common that, that everyone wants to service the area, but it's not common for, for someone not to, you know, want to service it, so it's kind of been an unusual situation. It's not, it's not common. Any more new business? In the way of announcements, Sherwood Police, Sherwood Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association on the border will donate 20% of lunch or ticket, dinner ticket on, at, or SCPAA on November 16th and December 21st, 2017, and Papa Murphy's, 15% of every sale goes to support the Sherwood Police Department on October 26th, November 30th, and December 28th. Arkansas Drug Takeback Event is scheduled for this Saturday, October 28th. Sherwood Annual Halloween Carnival will be October 31st, 6:30, 8:30, Sherwood Forest. Sherwood Haunted House will be October 30th and 31st. Cost is $3, 6:30 to 10:30, Sherwood Forest. Uh, November Animal Shelter Events, home for the holidays adoption specials all month, pre-Thanksgiving free adoption event, November 20th to 22nd. The Sherwood Animal Shelter is a field of bold sponsor site for food drop-off and pick up to help needy pet owners during the holiday season. Our Wet Dry Election is scheduled for November the 14th, and also I was asked to give a little bit of an update on the Round Top. Have been waiting on a, a contractor that was willing to work some with the city. We have been, um, provided a, a plan to, to do the entire landscape and the Round Top. We just can't afford what that plan would entail, but perhaps we can do it in phases, and we met, um, with someone this afternoon that's very willing to, um, in fact, it was, it's Tom Brooks, very willing to help us in a phase, to do the first phase and get the bricks in, and, and then perhaps, um, we can move on with the second phase. We're much have to do it in bite-sized portions, but, um, we do need to get those bricks displayed out there, and hopefully when we display the bricks, we'll have more interest in the facility. So, thank you. Are there any more announcements?
Sherwood Veterans Day, right?
Yes. Thank you very much. That is not on the announcements, but we do appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Are there any more announcements? Move for adjournment.